You're on forty-four, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, number forty-four.
Is that Winder Singh from Open Pantry, from Pantry Forty-One, are you here?
The gas station?
Don't see it.
Yeah, that's the mobile.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's just hold it aside in here a second. Okay, Martha Gabrielle Solis.
Via Senor.
Martha Gabriella Solis Via Senor, are you here? That's strike two. Okay, we'll hold that one. Maybe we went too fast.
These are our first non appearances?
Well, we're gonna hold those still. Jill Statnick? Come on front. Statnick? Stanick? Stanick?
Stanick.
Stanick. I should have known that.
Number forty-six, please.
Okay. This is number forty-six. Okay, this is for new license for...
Our tender license.
Right.
Our tender license.
And where are you gonna be working?
At Randy's Neighbors Inn.
Where?
Randy's Neighbors Inn.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I am working here.
Right. Do you know what? We called you in because of... As you know, we do police checks on everybody.
Right.
And... You didn't have anything written here as far as any violations.
That was my fault. I, because I, my lawyer hadn't gone to court on it.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
So it's still, still pending?
I didn't think I had to put it on that one. He went last week. But when I filed for it, I thought I had to put it on the next time that I applied for my license, so that was on my year.
Because there's one, you know, it's not less than that process for both of them.
Yeah.
What do we got?
Well, it's...
Oh.
You know, it says, uh... Since it's changed. Well, that, that's why you're here.
Right.
You know, and...
I assumed that's what it was.
You know, obviously, anybody who has an OWI, it's gonna be serving alcohol people. You know, you, at least once, you didn't make a right decision and... So we're concerned about, you know, in the future making other decisions.
It won't happen again.
And the, the second part of that, the possession charge... That's another problem that we have, because you, you talked to the police department. They said a lot of drugs go through bars. And if you have that problem...
Oh, it wasn't... They, they cleared me already down in Milwaukee. I just had to do a twenty horse community service. It wa, I, it wasn't mine. It was me giving it to another person. I've never dabbled in drugs, nothing with them.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on me.
Is he giving it to another person? Oh, can you describe what you mean by that?
It was, it was a girl that I knew. She had them. She couldn't take many more. Another girl that I knew did, and I says, you know, I can give them to her. She had lung cancer and money was tight. And so she gave them to me. I even completely forgot until the officer saw them in my purse that I had them in the bottom. Purse.
So you're basically, it was someone else's drug with their name on it, but you were in the possession of someone?
Right, right.
Okay.
Because I've, I do not do any drugs.
Does anyone else have any questions on this?
No, Mr. Chair.
Hold on, Weigle.
So have you been bartending in other cities before, other communities? So you just started working at...
Just West Dallas.
Just at Randy's?
Right.
Okay. And how long have you been working there?
And I've been there, um... Since his wife died, so it was eight years.
Okay, so just like the busy nights, you're like the extra bartender?
Right. And then I waitress sunset.
Server also?
Right.
Okay. You understand the importance of the bartending license and the rules that go along with it? You understand all that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, don't serve people that are drunk. I don't think we have, I don't think we've had neighbors in in here. Once?
Yeah.
Once, maybe. But, um, and if there is a problem, you should call, if you think you should call nine-one-one, pick up the phone and call, and our trained professionals will come help solve it.
Yeah, we're there.
And you don't have your license until you actually have your license? So likely be approved by this committee tonight. And then you'd be able to pick it up tomorrow, assuming it clears the whole council tonight, which it likely will. Be able to pick it up in the clerk's office till about two o'clock, between like ten and two. And if you don't pick it up, then it'll be mailed to your address.
Okay.
But again, you...
Well, I do have mine still.
You have a temp, you have a temporary or...
No, it's, it's a regular one.
Oh, this is a renewal?
Yeah.
So it's new.
It says renewal on the police report.
It says renewal?
No, it's renewal.
Okay.
So I have mine in town.
So it's new on that?
Yeah.
It's ex-renewal.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, this new form's got it.
A new renewal.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on me.
Nick, maybe, you, I saw your hand up like you wanted to say something, but just, you know, you know, it's one thing to have your friends' drugs, but then you're also being the person to pass it on. That is definitely illegal.
I did not know it was that. I learned my lesson on that day.
Did you have anything to add, Nick?
My understanding, this is important today. My understanding is that there's a DPA on that one, meaning, um, or diversion. Maybe they're diverting that case. That point aside, this is still pending. The OWI is still pending. It hasn't been a conviction on that yet. And so because of pending offense, it's not something that we can consider unless it's substantially related and either an exempt offense or, um, a violent defense against a juvenile. So we couldn't consider it at this time if we wanted to. It could be grounds for future revocation. For right now...
State law says, with what we have, we're compelled to approve.
Okay.
I move approval.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you very much. Now, do I still pick up the license? I don't, or do I just wait till my other one comes?
It'll get mailed to you. You have a, you have, you currently have a license that goes through the end of next month.
Right.
And this one will wait mailed to you before that.
Okay, thank you very much, Juddman.
Thank you. Benjamin Bishop. Benjamin Bishop? This is, uh, this came to us because of the, uh, possession charge. Is that why this is here? Because we normally don't have these, for these licenses, have these people...
If there's multiple charges. What did I write on the bottom?
Possession.
If there's...
Back seven eighteen.
The report. That's all that's written on here. So... Once again, that going way back when this first place or serpent opened. I don't know if that has any, well, the drugs probably would have something to do with that. So we'll hold it, get, call them in again. Okay. John Starr? This is, uh, came of the last meeting. We're, got whole Washington closed out. Or a special event permit. Okay. Last meeting, there's a lot of questions about it. First of all, closing off the whole street, there's no alleys on these streets, so nobody, so nobody can get to their houses?
Oh, no.
And...
They're able to get to their houses. We're not blocking any driveways or anything like that. I mean, the street, yeah, I'll have the barricades there, but I got people at both ends of the street that they can still get to their houses or get out of their houses, whatever.
Their driveways?
Their driveways, yeah.
You're gonna let cars drive through?
You're going always to party.
Well, if they have to, yeah, if they have to. We did it last year. I mean, obviously, I'm not gonna have traffic going through, but the people that live in the neighborhood, they get to their house or leave their house. It is what it is.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on me.
Have you talked to the neighbors? Have they given approval to this?
Yeah, I already got signatures, yeah.
Block party permit, and you've got, okay.
We, we got signatures.
Oh, yeah.
Because that's one thing we didn't know about last time.
Oh, really? Yeah, I got them last time, too.
No, no, I mean, last, uh, council meeting.
Two weeks ago.
When, when we had here, we asked if there were signatures, and apparently maybe you got them, but I didn't see them.
Oh, yeah, I turned that in.
So...
Weeks ago.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on me.
Uh, seeing that the neighbors have signed off on this...
Yeah, it was on there. Has anybody seen that, though? He said he turned it in.
Uh, well, Mr. Chair, I verified with the engineering department that he did in fact submit a block party permit. At the time I asked, it hadn't been approved, but I don't know about now.
Mr. B...
Hold on me, go ahead.
I move we approve subject to verification of the proper signatures for the block party.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Maybe not specifically for this, but should we consider when an event's gonna have this kind of impact on the neighborhood, we have a public hearing on it?
I don't know if send the ordinance or anything.
I mean, I'm just thinking it's maybe something we should discuss an ordinance change. I don't know.
Do you have any problems like, this is your second time you have it, or?
Second time.
There's no problems there?
No.
I didn't get any calls. You know, but...
Everything is cleaned up.
Let's hope we don't have any problems, then we can continue on.
Yeah, I don't want any problems.
If there are problems, then it'll be a rapid halt.
Yeah. Like I said, the police can walk through anytime they want, check it out, do whatever they gotta do.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
So do I still have to find out if through the, about the signatures and stuff? I mean, I turned it in, like I said.
You turned it into who? To city clerk or the engineering department?
Upstairs or downstairs? Upstairs, engineering.
Yeah, engineering, yeah.
Okay. So you're gonna look into that? Okay.
They'll let you in.
All right.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't think anybody new came in. So... I'm sort of surprised about... Everybody, everybody mailed something out and they all were supposed to be here. Okay, we're gonna hold all these. So then we have item number thirty-two. This is for...
Uh, move for approval. Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
I should abstain?
Yes, present, yes.
No. What did you say?
True term is abstain, but we have presence, so it's the same.
We have present on the handle.
It should, it should be abstain.
It should be abstain, but I'll vote present.
Mark it as present and abstain.
Yeah.
Well, this is present and abstain above it, so we're, we're pretty well covered here.
Okay.
Okay, then we have number thirty-three. This is for Hankies, sixty-first and Lincoln.
I move approval. Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thirty, thirty-four.
I move approval subject to necessary requirements.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Got all the paperwork here. Number thirty-five, St. Augustine's Parish.
Move approval subject to... Then we're gonna waive their surety bond, that's the thing. And, yeah, so we're approving that we're gonna waive the surety bond.
Uh, do I, do I have a second here for some, me, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I, that we all knew, because I wasn't sure myself until I read further.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Then we have the police report, number, item number thirty-six. And then we'll have thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine. The motion will place these on file.
So moved. Second.
Uh, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That is all? Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're holding those other ones.
All right. And the administration and finance committee will come to order. All five members are present. Item seven is a resolution approving an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the City of West Dallas and the Wisconsin State Fair Park Board for first aid, first response, and emergency transport for the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty state fair seasons. We need to amend that. It says, um, in our heading twenty twenty-nine, we need to amend that to twenty twenty. But, uh, yeah.
Really planning ahead.
We got folks from the, the state fair here. Thanks for coming, folks. And, and, yeah, Mason, can you just come and tell us a little bit about this, big picture here?
Yeah. Good evening. So before you, you have a resolution to enter into a second agreement with state fair. So right now, we currently have one agreement that covers municipal services for the fair. And part of that existing agreement is fire protection and ALS protection. For the past decade or so, Bell Ambulance has been doing the BLS, the basic life support at the fair. The fair is opting to look at different avenues for BLS this year, and they approached the fire department and asked if we'd be capable of doing that. We put together a proposal based off a mix of staffing of our ALS providers as well as Milwaukee County Office of Emergency Management. We simply don't have enough bodies in-house to make this work. But Milwaukee County does employ firefighter, paramedics, and other fire departments on the side. They work at events at the Pfizer Forum and other venues across the area and provide medical care. So we're basically gonna subcontract and, and supplement our staffing with OEM staff. So it'll be a mix of West Dallas firefighter, paramedics on duty or on overtime, as well as OEM staff on site. And then there'll be a West Dallas command presence there at all times overseeing the event. Our total personnel cost, we estimate the worst-case scenario for the city would be eighty-three thousand dollars. This deal before you with the state fair is a hundred thousand dollars, or seventeen thousand dollars. We'll room to cover, you know, expenses that are gonna come up with the event. Overall, we feel that's a very good deal for the city. We've ran these numbers a couple of different ways. We sat down with finance and the city attorney. I think we're all in agreement that this is a good deal for the city.
All right. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Hold on me, May.
So our first contract where we're a hundred percent covered with the fair?
You're saying if you add our first contract and the second?
No, 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 I was saying, this is our first contract where we're actually made whole for our services?
It depends on who you ask. I would say this is a bet...
I'm happy, I'll, I'll take it.
This is a better deal than the existing agreement. This is in addition to not replacing the existing agreement.
In all fairness to the state fair, it's state funding that sets it, not the fair, so... I don't hold that against you. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion?
Move approval.
Second. So we need to amend it first. So can I have...
Uh, I, I move approval with the amendment.
There we go.
Second with the amendment.
Perfect, thank you. And any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item eight, resolution authorize allocation of an amount not to exceed thirty-three hundred dollars for pay for exceptional performances for municipal court personnel.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, Rebecca.
Rebecca Grill, city administrator. When the pay for exceptional performance policy was passed municipal court, employees were not included as part of that. The judge has requested that his staff be, that some money be allocated for their, for them for exceptional performance, and this is the amount that I have worked out with him for three employees.
Hold on, Rube.
I, you just answered, three, so each get eleven hundred?
Um, no, it's not divided up that way. If you'd like me to go over that, I can, at some point. There's, there's actually four. There's one person that's a provisional employee. She doesn't work full-time.
Does the, the bailiff doesn't count, does he?
No.
We always have a policeman there. Okay.
Move for approval.
A motion from Alderman Chaples.
Second.
Second from Alderman Weigle. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Hold on me.
Do we account for this in our budget?
This is...
Or in the future, can we include a block in our budget?
The, the challenge is there, so we do include it as part of our budget for all other employees. The challenge is that they're not part of that policy that allows us to allocate from that amount.
And the reason being because of separate office, correct?
Well, they could...
It could be.
Sure. So by statute, the municipal court supervises and directs court staff. However, the council's charged with setting salaries for court staff. So in this particular case, although the council could be more specific in its allocation of salaries, it's advisable, because the judge is the direct supervisor, to potentially grant that person the ability to have a chunk of money to distribute as they see fit based on performance of, of staff. So that's the reason why it's worded this way and why it's a separately, or it's a separate item for the company.
But in the budget in the future, we could include a line item, potential.
You could, but then you'd just be, you'd be just allocating him that amount every year.
Basically, what he should do, Mr. Chairman...
Please.
What he should do is put in his budget.
If he wants to have the amount available every year.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? Item nine, resolution relative to approval of employment contract for position of health commissioner, Robert Lightshaw. Move approval. Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? Item ten is a resolution to amend the City of West Dallas policies and procedures creating, maintaining, administering pay ranges, including amended title compensation pay administration. Move approval. Second. A motion from Alderman May, second from Alderman Weigle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? And item eleven, a resolution to approve the use agreement between the City of West Dallas and the West Dallas, West Milwaukee Recreation Community Services Department of the School District of West Dallas, West Milwaukee et al. for use of McKinley Park. Move approval. I don't think we're ready to do that yet.
No, no.
Yeah, I, I would like to be with you, Marty, but, but we're not there. Yes, Kale?
Mr. Chair, there was a version submitted, and that's the published version. It was one I drafted in which it essentially allows the school district to use the park facilities for the entire season that they would from, uh, May fifteenth to September fifteenth, November...
November.
It was a November fifteenth, sorry, November fifteenth. So the entire season they could use it. In exchange, they would take care of the entire area of the park that they use during that time. I shared this version with the council of the school district and got a version back that I then sent out to the council. It imposes a much more stringent duty upon the city to maintain that area throughout. And instead, the only duty that the district would have would be to prepare the ball fields before games and essentially pick up any trash or anything left after the games. Other than that, you would assume that all maintenance will be on the city. So those are the two versions that were presented. It was sort of a short timeline, so I wasn't able to really do anything more than just give you both versions, the district's version and the version I put together. So it's up to the committee to decide if you want to approve one or the other, or if you wanted to try to amend one or the other, to add different provisions. So it's related to the committee now.
I think we need to hold this and let our able city attorney work with the council for the school district and come to a meeting of the minds.
Well, what, what's our recommendation?
For the whole park or just the north end for the baseball diamonds or...
What, what I had advised was they would take care of the whole park and then have the whole park available for exclusive use. They've come back with just wanting to take care of and occupy the ball diamonds and only take care of it when they're using it and shortly after.
Hold on me.
And I think they should have to take care of the bathrooms while they're there. What I'm looking at is, I'm comparing it to how Little League of West Dallas works. And when a little league uses their ball fields there, they, they clean them, they maintain the fields of their own. They, they take it upon themselves to clean the restrooms, um, all that stuff. I don't, if I recall correctly, before the city had this property, all that fell on the school district anyway.
When they were the owners, yes.
So I have no problem with asking them to continue to do that.
Hold on, Mr. Chaples, please.
Okay. I'm missing something here. City owned McKinley Park. We sold it to school district. School district sold it to a developer. And now they're coming to us to get a contract.
We lease it to the developer.
Say it again?
We are currently the less, less C's.
That lease at the, okay, that...
So the city is a less C right now, whole park.
So we can use it while we're waiting to be developed?
Yes.
Okay.
Hold on, Weigle.
So do I understand they're not gonna operate the summer playground? At the, do we, if that's...
That was not part of the agreement, no.
Okay. What, but...
That they presented.
All they want is the baseball diamonds.
That's what it appears.
But they expect us to have the bathrooms open for their, for their baseball players to use?
Yes.
And they expect us to maintain the bathrooms?
It appears so.
And we're not charging them even a dollar a year for the rent?
No.
Okay, just wanna understand where, what they're, where they are, where we are. And we got, and they want us to mow all the lawns, but they'll mow the baseball.
They'll, they might mow the baseball field if it's necessary to prepare it for the games. But I would not anticipate that they will.
Well, they will if we don't. Well, i- i- I don't want this to become a school district, City of West Dallas thing, but I think...
It's common sense.
If, if we were leasing this out to a private group that wanted to use the field, we would ask them to mow the area, we would ask them to clean the bathrooms, we would ask them to maintain the clay or sand or whatever they're using on the fields. And, and again, I like to remember that we're all the same. I'm paying taxes to the school district, I'm paying taxes to the city. I get it. But it's a bigger strain on our DPW to have to go out there and maintain something they didn't have to a year ago.
And we're still doing all the snow shoveling too, which I understand because they're not going to use it in the winter. I'd like to see it go back to the way it was when they owned it. They maintained it.
I mean, we took on the lease in order to help the deal go forward. But in the end, the school district's going to have the, pretty much the same use out of it for baseball and stuff such, so. I'm kind of leading your way.
And they made a lot of money off of the sale.
Right, and we don't, so.
Right, a lot of money.
They expect us to have the bathrooms unlocked?
Yes, they're supposed to be available for use. And they would do, they would do a cleanup.
They'd empty the garbage cans.
Remove garbage cans and things. But it would give the city to maintain the actual restroom plenty of.
That would not be in my direction as a point of negotiation. I'd like to see them maintain it.
Which is the, is what Cale had drafted originally.
All right, so we're going to hold this without Alderman? So there was some additional language you sent, a marked up copy, and it included language on insurance and a lot of other fun stuff. Was that included in your version?
No, I've removed all insurance and identification. So if there was any insurance provision, it just would say to maintain a reasonable commercial insurance and something much more just falling in the umbrella of both the district and the city's insurance umbrella. That's the only insurance I would recommend that the committee approve.
Just frankly, if someone cuts themselves on a fence, they'll come after us, you know, they may, if they're litigious, come after us, come after the school district. Before, we didn't have that liability. Well, our liability, because it's a park, would be very minimal.
We have a lot of recreational.
Yeah, but still.
We must charge them a fee and we waive recreational.
It's actually, if you only charge a fee, it's spectacular.
That's why he's the city attorney.
So that's the general direction, right, Mr. Chair, is treat it like they had it before?
I'll take the comments from tonight and renegotiate with the district's attorney.
All right, so yeah, we'll hold this for our next meeting. Thank you, Cale. I'm Matt. And item twelve, finance director comptroller submitting report for two point seven million dollars in checks issued. Motion to place on file.
So moved.
Second. A motion from Alderman May and a second from Alderman Rowe. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? And then item thirteen is discussion regarding possible opioid manufacturer litigation using outside counsel.
Mr. Chair.
Attorney Decker.
There are two firms that approached various city officials with the idea of filing litigation on behalf of the city of West Dallas against opioid manufacturers and distributors. The idea would be that each firm would represent the city as outside counsel on a special project just this one item. And we actually represented from each of the firms that are here tonight. So if the council would like to, the committee would like to hear more from them, I think they have got some information I want to present you with. I think the idea tonight is unless you have a very strong feeling one way or another, it's a good idea to hold this item after hearing what they say, so you have someone to digest it, think about it, and you can ask me questions in the meantime. And by the next meeting, hopefully we have enough information to make a decision. But if you want to open the floor to hear from either provider, there's a firm from Florida that has local counsel and a firm from Texas that has local counsel. So the, both local councils are present.
Yeah, folks, if you want to come on forward, have a seat at the table here.
Mr. Chair, can I ask you, you have a special, Cale? Competing firms or?
Yes. So essentially, they're going to give you what they would do. There are different approaches from a legal perspective. So that'll be a big difference between the two of them. Other than that, looking at the firms, they're both qualified, competent firms, and would be well represented. It's just really more the idea of which, which angle do you want to take? Because there are different legal strategies.
This is different. Usually you go for a request for proposals or, we actually have both of you in front of us at the same time. I don't think I've ever seen that before.
This was the most efficient way to do it, to get it going fast because they both, they both approached. And so I told each of them that they could each do about five minutes to present their general proposal. And then if there are any questions from the committee, they could take those questions.
Yeah, and I think we'll just go left to right. And so sir, tell us who you are.
Sure. Well, let me first say, good evening and thank you for hearing from us. My name's Dan Griffin and I want to just, I had an opportunity to meet with counsel before the meeting and we've corresponded a little bit. So we have had a chance to discuss the case. Let me, let me just kind of clarify one thing with the very short amount of time that I have and before we start to think about the bucks too much.
Yeah.
I am not acting as local counsel. I am a partner in the firm. And that matters to us because this case is very personal to us and it's personal to me. I live in Greendale. My wife is an ER doctor in the area. My kids go to Hell's Corners Lutheran. I mean, this is our neighborhood. I drove straight down Seventy Sixth Street to get here. So it's very personal to us. The case is personal. We have offices here in Milwaukee. We do have our major flagship offices in San Antonio and we have an office in Salt Lake City. So we're national and basically this is what we do. What I think is the most important thing to talk about is that we are already in the litigation. It's not overselling it to say that we currently represent literally millions of people in the opioid litigation. We represent hospital districts, counties, cities, Indian tribes in New Mexico, Texas, some cities in Wisconsin, as well as in Utah. So what's, what's, what's the difference? What do you guys have to know? What you have to know is that you're going to hear probably two very different strategies as to how to bring these claims. And our strategy is to keep it local, to keep it local so that we can have control of the case. Let me give you the absolute quickest Reader's Digest version of what's happening in the opioid litigation. You have essentially three buckets of cases. The first bucket that you kind of hear the most about, because it just makes headlines the most, is what is known as the National MDL or multi-district litigation. These are cases that are essentially federal claims. They are filed into federal court, they're aggregated, and they've been moved to the Northern District of Ohio. In our opinion, you lose all control of your case once a judge in Northern Ohio is deciding whether or not you can settle that claim and what West Dallas's damages would be. We do not adopt that strategy. We are adopting the strategy, what I would call number two. Not that it's second best, we think it's the best. We keep it in county court. We represent the city in Milwaukee County. We bring the defendants to the jury in Milwaukee County and have them face the jury in Milwaukee County. The damages are decided specifically for West Dallas. West Dallas money stays in West Dallas. We don't aggregate your claim in any way. And you get to negotiate your settlement as you would as a plaintiff in any case. So that's a very big difference. We want to keep it, we want to keep it here. And we're talking to other cities in the county to do the exact same thing. We think that's really the only way to get fair and just compensation for the city. Truly, we do. And then the third bucket is what I'd call kind of the AG claims, the attorney general claims. You hear a lot about these two, mainly because Wisconsin finally sued on behalf of the state, our state AG filed his claim. And he's only suing one defendant, really one defendant. He's suing Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family who owns Purdue Pharma. Our case would have many, many different defendants, you know, approaching probably twenty to thirty different defendants in the state case. So that's going to be the major difference that you hear. Filing in federal court is a completely different strategy that we do not, we don't adopt. We don't think you should do it. And we'd like to keep your claim here. Our track record speaks for itself. We have had major mass torts as a firm. We've represented American farmers. That's how we started as a firm. Tens of thousands of rice farmers against Syngenta. Again, those were in state court. Tens of thousands of American corn farmers and rice farmers against Bayer, again, in state court. And again, we, the third kind of category of our clients is American soldiers against Three M, again, in state court. Always with the same strategy because we think it's worth it. We think you get more for your claim, you get what you deserve. So that's one thing. Some other important things before I pass over, and I don't, if you have any questions, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll just kind of guess what you're thinking.
And what's the name of your firm again?
Phipps Deacon Purnell.
Thank you.
And my name is Dan. So it's completely budget neutral. It costs you nothing. We absorb the cost of everything. So if you lose, you pay nothing. Right up front, I think that's an important thing and a possible differentiator. But really, I mean, the major thing is that we really take this case personally. And that's why, that's why we're doing it. So that's why I think we're the only logical choice and we're asking for your decision to retain us in this case.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, any questions so far?
I'd like to save them to the end. I want to hear both sides.
Sure, sure. All right. So in interim, we're going to be working with. Please tell us who you are also.
I'm Fred Kabeck. I've been a lawyer for five oh years.
Five oh.
Before some of you were born. And we're going to be working with a firm in New York called Napoli Scholnick, which has recovered billions of dollars in this type of case. What I would do is compare it to the tobacco lawsuits where the state of Wisconsin got hundreds of millions of dollars. There are numerous, numerous plaintiffs in this case, Milwaukee County, Waukesha County, Dane County. State of Wisconsin is going to be involved in, in this case. And all I can say from my own experience, Attorney Griffin talked about filing locally. In my experience, this is going to be removed to federal court. And those of you that are lawyers are familiar with that, there's no doubt in my mind that that's going to happen. So I would like, we have Joe Sheschnick, excuse me, on the line. Joe, would you mind this, you're before the West Dallas committee called?
Administration and Finance Committee of the common council.
Joe, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Hi, everybody. It was a little broken up. I couldn't hear much of what you were saying, but I can hear you if you, everybody can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you. Great. Go ahead, please.
Joe, could you tell us a little about your firm and your involvement with these, these types of cases?
Sure. And I should say also on the line is Shayna Sachs and I think still Sal Badala, two of the partners at my office as well. So we, we are Nap. Hi, Dex, Sal, yeah. So we're Napoli Scholnick. We have, we're a law firm of about fifty, sixty attorneys in about eight or nine different states. We've been involved in this litigation for about three or so years by now. We represent about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy-five counties and cities across the country. Just to move through it a little quick, we current, examples of some places we represent is we currently represent Cuyahoga County, which is in Ohio. And I don't know if Fred touched on this because I really only heard the very end of the conversation. But so there's about eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred, it's adding up every day, counties and cities who have filed this case over the past, you know, three or so years. A lot of them, all of them that have been filed in federal court have been coordinated into what we call a multi-district litigation or an MDL, where all the cases get sent to one judge to handle and to set initial trials and go to discovery and everything that needs to happen in the case so that it's all coordinated and not happening in a thousand different places at once. And that was all sent before a judge in the Northern District of Ohio. So our client, Cuyahoga County, a very large county in Ohio, is going to be the first trial in the country against all of these defendants. The state of Oklahoma has a trial coming up next week against a couple of these defendants, which will really be the first trial if they don't settle next week or so. They've already settled with Purdue, one of the opioid manufacturers, for two hundred and seventy, two hundred and eighty million dollars against Purdue Pharma, which is one of the various defendants in our case. That was the state of Oklahoma. But our client, Cuyahoga County, is going to be the first trial in October. So we've been spending the past year and a half really focused on that, getting that case ready for trial, doing dozens and dozens of depositions and everything, everything like that. We also represent most of the state of New York in a litigation that's going on in New York State Court against the same opioid manufacturers and distributors. In that case, the defendants obviously tried to dismiss the case as they always do in the beginning. We were successful in getting past that. So now we're in discovery, exchanging documents and doing depositions and things like that in New York State Court. We also represent a lot of the state of West Virginia, who's in the, pretty much the same position in terms of the case that New York is in right now. And like I said, it's about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty cities, counties, from almost probably every state in the country that we currently represent, many of which are in the MDL, waiting for the first trial to take place in October. A little bit more about us and then I'll, if you guys have any questions, be happy to answer them. I know, I don't want to take up too much time. I know it's, it's late. But this is really what our firm specializes in. We handle mass tort litigation, pharmaceutical litigation. We have a ton of experience in this field of law. We've been, you know, very successful in this area with a lot of cases involving a lot of different drugs and other types of mass torts against pharmaceutical companies or all other types of companies. And, and we're hopeful that this case, and I'll just say hopeful, is going to reach a, maybe some sort of resolution with some of these defendants that, you know, obviously there's been stuff in the report, in the news and things like that, that the judge that's overseeing this across the entire country is, is very interested in trying to have a settlement in which all of the plaintiffs, every city and county that has filed, can take pardon. And that's why, I mean, we've been encouraging counties and cities to, to get on board and consider filing a lawsuit for, for three years now. And now it is, the time is somewhat running out. Not, not to try to rush anybody or push anybody, but again, we have our first trial in October and we're hopeful that between now and then, there's going to start to be some national resolutions with some of these companies. Nothing guaranteed, nothing, you know, nothing happening tomorrow that we know of, but you know, with the trial hanging over their head, we feel like there's a good chance that there's going to start to be some national settlements for all of the counties and large cities that have filed across the country.
And, Joe, I was just going to add something if you.
Yeah, go ahead. The other thing I just wanted to add, I was before Judge Polster today in the MDL. And I will tell you that defendants started raising statute of limitations and specifically saying that every day a new case is filed and at some point, the court is going to have to cut off the filing of these cases. Judge really didn't react, but you know, like Joe was saying, to stress the importance of getting on file in time for a global resolution is extremely important. And we understand this is a very serious decision. It takes time to consider. But one thing we definitely want to stress, it's important to try to get on file very soon because defendants will use that against, you know, newly filed cases at some point and say that they should have known or they should have been on file by certain, by such and such date. So just something to look out for and think about, especially since they already started raising it with the court, to kind of give them a heads up that this is something that they'll be looking to file motions in the future about. Right, that's a good point. And the only other thing I'll say is I heard somebody, I think it was Fred, or again, it was kind of breaking up in the beginning, but I heard mention of the tobacco litigation that I'm sure a lot of people are aware of. You know, this is very different than tobacco in a lot of ways, but there are some comparisons. And as, as some of you may know, even with the case handled by the attorney general's offices, for the most part, the attorney general's offices reached settlements. And then depending on where you are in the country, some counties and cities saw money from that settlement and some saw virtually nothing and were very unhappy with the way it was handled through the attorney general's office. So I don't know what your experience was in, in Wisconsin, but we're seeing something similar in that, that all the attorney generals have been either filing or, or planning on filing. We work very closely with the New York Attorney General. We've been meeting with the New Hampshire Attorney General. They're all trying to, to work with us now because they're, they've never seen anything like this where counties and cities have decided to file lawsuits themselves. Because it's always been our argument that, you know, while tobacco was a lot about Medicaid dollars and education and maybe more things that were handled at the state level, the opioid epidemic is more about, you know, social services and police forces and first responders and, and things like that, that are felt much more at the county and city level than necessarily the state level. So that's why we've encouraged a lot of our clients, counties and, and cities with a decent population and their own police force and things like that, to consider filing their own lawsuit. You know, that way they have their own, their own say and their own, you know, chance to get some recovery directly from this case rather than waiting to see what the attorney general does and happens to distribute the money and what they use the money for. We represent a lot of the state of Oklahoma. Like I said before, their attorney general reached a settlement with one of the defendants for two hundred and seventy million, which is a lot. I mean, that's, that's a big settlement for, for the state of Oklahoma, which does not have an enormous population. And, and most of that money was, was being directed towards a research facility. And there's been a lot of debate about how much we'd actually get for the counties. And it seemed like it was going to be very much. So our counties decided to pursue their own litigation for their own costs. So that's why a place like your city that, that we do know has its own expenditures and its own, you know, police and things that have been impacted by.
Okay, yeah, let me, let me stop you right there. And so one, one issue, of course, I think that we're concerned about and as representatives of the taxpayers is if this all goes south, if this all goes wrong and we were to take on your firm to represent us, what is the city of West Dallas on the hook for, if anything?
Nothing. Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I mean, maybe you should have talked about it at the beginning. Right, so the, the agreement, and I don't know if Fred has had the opportunity to circulate what the, what the draft typical agreement that we have of most of the country looks like, but right, it's completely contingency based. We cover all the costs, expenses. We don't ask the city for a dollar at any point. If, if the case is successful and the city gets a recovery, we get paid back the money that we invested in the lawsuit and we get our contingency fee. If the lawsuit's unsuccessful, if the city gets nothing, if whatever happens, you'll never, you'll never take a dollar out of city budget to pay us or to, to pay anything towards the lawsuit. There's no, no money coming, I think it's a clear, but there'd be no money coming from the city whatsoever for any reason.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And then we have some questions from the committee members. Alderman May? Yeah, this question's for, for Dan. Your proposal is to go directly to county court. And this gentleman said, well, that could be relocated to federal court. What happens in that scenario? What does that mean?
So the, just back up a second. We believe, not to get too much into the actual litigation strategy, that we can keep our case in state court for a number of reasons that, you know, we can talk about maybe in a closed session, but we think that there are, there are strategies to keep it in state court. There were at least five things that I want to, I get, this is what lawyers do, right? So in a sense, and I respect counsel, he's made our point for us. Time and time again, big cases get settled to the detriment of local cities and counties. And I don't think I'm speaking out of school to say that. The settlement was against Purdue. It was two hundred and forty million, which does sound a lot. There's three point eight million people in Oklahoma. So they basically gave a per head settlement. It was like, you know, seventy-nine dollars per person for everyone in the state of Oklahoma. However, when they put the percentage signs next to who got what, the cities and counties were on the very short end of that stick. So much so that the cities and counties are now going back to court saying, actually, Mr. Attorney General, you did not have the authority to settle this case, Mr. Hunter, and why did you give us only four percent of this two hundred and forty million? What about? I mean, especially in a city like West Dallas, right? You have higher than, way higher than average prescription rate. I mean, tonight, you had somebody coming to the council that had probably a, a prescription drug issue, right? I mean, this is real.
Possible.
Possible. Just as, I just use that as an illustration, right? I mean, the fire department has won awards for its ability to track Narcan abuse and Narcan use in the city, overdoses. It's won statewide awards for that. So West Dallas is not the same as any other city, in my opinion, and its damages are specific to West Dallas. So. So this, there's a few other things, you're, I mean, the length of time, I think should throw up a red flag too. The M D L has been going a long time, and it's now reaching its possible first trial, which is in October. Yes, the Oklahoma trial is going to start a week from today, and it's going to be televised, so if you guys are interested in watching it on TV, you can watch that. Quick, real quick response too on a couple other damages issue. West Dallas has two real components of damages. Again, you pay nothing either way, so we are going to absorb the cost of putting on your case as well, I think that's a differentiator. So the expenditures that we put on are coming out of our part, not your part. It's going to take a long time to get these trials to resolution, if they ever come back. You heard this phrase, take part in a global settlement. Those are words of, tell us how many people live in your city and how old the population is, and what, and then we'll kick out some number, you can take it or leave it. That's, that's kind of what I'm hearing. West Dallas has past damages that we can point to, and when I say it's going to cost you nothing, I'm going to be completely honest. It might cost a little time to get the police and fire department to let us know exactly how many prescriptions, you know, how many overdoses were responded to, how much overtime has been paid for, how many calls have been just because of overdoses. Because we can do that, and there's other cities in the county that can do and have done that. We also know that you are getting reimbursed on some level likely for Narcan that's being used in the city, and that's being tracked by the fire department. I don't know if the fire department is still here, but they should be applauded for that. They're actually well-recognized as having this website that's incredible, you don't see that in any other states that we're in, that they're tracking it that specifically. So that's past. The future damages, you know, we talked about this a little bit, we are going to bring a nuisance claim on behalf of the city, and what that means, you know, nuisance gets thrown around kind of as a, a me-too, kind of also lawsuit, but in this circumstance, it's real, because we know we have a problem. I mean, no one's going to dispute that, the defendants don't even dispute that. They know we have an issue. Question is, what are we going to do about it? And how much is that going to cost? So to abate and get rid of this nuisance, it's going to take time. People are estimating about ten to fifteen years, and it's going to take money. So there's all sorts of models circulating, but West Dallas' future damages, and this is just to give you some, some idea of what has been discussed nationally as to what that costs. It's approximately, if you look at a hub and spoke model, which is called, or the New Hampshire model, it's about fifteen thousand dollars per person, per year, to treat and care for until they're cured. So that's a, an element of future damages. So that's what we believe the actual hard damages are going to be for the city and pretty much every city that is going to get involved. And I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, West Dallas has been hit harder than most on this issue. If you look at a heat map of the state of Wisconsin, there's a big red dot over the southern part of, you know, southeastern Wisconsin, and then you're talking Cudahoga, South Milwaukee, West Dallas, Milwaukee. So it's real here, it's real personal to us, and I think if I haven't made it clear, that we want to be your lawyers because we think it matters.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Alderman.
Original question, then relocated, what does that mean?
Oh, so, like, literally, what does that mean? If our case, if somehow the defendants were able to remove our case, because we're filing in Milwaukee County, they would remove, and this has been a strategy. By the way, you're getting the benefit of us having gone through this cases, you know, other cases nationally, so we know their playbook. The playbook is, as soon as you file, they're going to remove it. I can tell you right now they're going to do it. They'll think of some reason, somehow, some way to get your case out of Milwaukee County into the Eastern District of Wisconsin, in, which sits in Milwaukee. Then the game becomes, not the game, but then the question becomes, how do you get your case remanded? And because of the way, and the parties that we're going to name, we're going to be filing only state actions, so we're going to be using Wisconsin law only, not federal. Right now Milwaukee County sued using RICO, RICO statute, so that got them into federal court and filed directly in. Then we need to get our case remanded back to county court. So that's, that's going to be the issue, and that's what counsel's referring to.
And if along that way, none of that stuff happens, then what?
Well, that, that's not what we want.
Is there a way to get back into the-
What would happen is, and now we're kind of like trying to forecast through a crystal ball, but what would happen is, it goes into the Eastern District, and it would probably get tagged and sent over objection to the M D L, which is not what we want. We want to control our case, we don't want counsel that's on the plaintiff's, you know, executive committee deciding how much West Dallas should get. But that really kind of comes down to a remand decision by the federal court.
It's the best case, it's decided in our county court, worst case, it ends up going to the federal.
Or stayed, and then the cases are, when and if the cases are ever remanded, we actually get to try our case in federal court in the Eastern District.
Got it.
Okay, any other questions from the committee members? All right, yeah, hey, thank you, everybody, for coming. We aren't going to act on this tonight, we're going to talk it over with our city attorney, and we'll decide how to proceed. But hey, thank you all, and thanks to everyone on the phone also.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Have a great night. Thank you. Bye.
See you at the O D A R. Which is in Oho now, the Office of Hearings Operations, Alex and I see each other there when we're lawyering.
Been a while.
Yeah, that's right.
Only twenty-four years.
All right. All right, so, and then, you want to go into closed session then, Kale, on items fourteen through twenty?
If there's a need, if there's a need to, I can go over them briefly. Fourteen is just simply a lawsuit that was filed regarding a claim that was denied, and so the city will be, our office will-
Well, let's go into closed session, since it's, it's noticed anyhow, and-
The major closed session will be for number fifteen.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
For agenda items fourteen to twenty, the committee may convene in closed session pursuant to the provisions of section nineteen point eight-five-one-G of the Wisconsin State Statutes for the purpose of conferring with the city attorney, who will render oral or written advice concerning the strategy to be adopted with respect to litigation in which the city is or is not likely to become involved. This committee may reconvene in open session after the completion of closed session to consider the balance of the agenda. And to go into closed session, Alderman Weigle.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, Alderman Trapeleski.
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Roat?
Aye.
And we have five in favor, we are in closed session.